Well, the skirt was from. But she got this, she got the head of me. So much. Guys, I ran here. Even the revenue, she said, well, no, my dad drove me. Then I ran here. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah. And it's like a pre-filtered for employment for a lot of.
Hold on Friday. Drive approach.
Yeah, I was able to do hard things. Like here.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
What is your.
That'll save us time.
So like literally ink and sound and.
When they know.
At seven o'clock, I'm going to call this meeting to order. If everyone can please stand and join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is the approval of tonight's agenda. Commissioners, do we have anything we would like to add or take away from this evening's agenda? Hearing none, I'll move on to public comment. So at this. At this time, I will be taking public comment to items that are not listed on this evening's agenda packet, okay? If you wish to make public comment to the Gaslight Investors project that is scheduled to be our third agenda item, we will take comment on that agenda item at that time. So to right now, it's public comment on something that is not on this evening's agenda. Before we go to public comment, I'd just like to remind everyone to please keep your comments to three minutes and three minutes only. Also, to please remember in your comments to be polite, courteous, and remember that we're all neighbors. So at this time, I will start public comment. It's come to up. If you have something to say, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Stuart Citron. I live at 2615 Oakwood Southeast. I guess I've lived in East Grand Rapids for about 46 years, and I don't know how to introduce my discussion item, but I'm just going to throw the topic out. And the topic, I'm going to guess you guys are going to give me a little feedback. The topic is little kids under six, five, seven, driving electric scooters in the streets of East Grand Rapids. With that, I'm hoping you guys will do some discussing, perhaps think about an ordinance.
Thank you. Is there anyone else this evening that would like to make public comment to something not on this evening's agenda? Okay, hearing none. I will close public comment and bring it up here for the report of the mayor and city commissioners, including committee liaison reports. I will start with Commissioner Skaggs. Do you have anything to add this evening?
Sure. I took a long time and thought a lot about what I wanted to say tonight because I just recognized that we are in a uncomfortable week and living in a deeply divided time that a lot of people have struggled with. And compassionate people really across all political perspectives are grieving the state of our politics and wondering how we got here. You know, we've been really torn apart by divisive rhetoric, by algorithms that reinforce division. And this, what I feel like is a growing inability to see the shared humanity in each other. And it's not perception, it's harsh reality. It's underscored by tragedies like Charlie Cook and like Melissa Hortman. There are scores of others. And I really fear, I fear for our future. And you know, you might wonder or think, what does this have to do with city commission or commissioner report? But my answer is everything. Because our ability to heal and to build community, it starts here. It starts in our hometown through spaces that we create and hold in places like our parks and our schools and our downtown where we come together. And we need these places. We need to unplug, gather together, we need to reconnect and put a priority on it. And in these spaces, remind ourselves that we are not enemies, we're fellow humans. That's why for so long I've been so passionate about downtown, having a space together and foster connection and heal social fabric. It matters so much. And we can start now. We can do this, it's what we can do. Placing our top value on our community connection and doing it through the choices we make here. And I hope we will. That's all. I don't have anything else city related, but it was really important to me to get those things out.
Thank you. Commissioner Burdick?
Nothing to add to that, very well said, Commissioner Skaggs.
Commissioner Wesley?
Got ditto. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Burdick?
Nothing to add this evening.
Okay.
I do have something that I'd like to share and talk about just a little bit. And I know that we have an item, of course, we all know that we have an item on Gaslight Investors here for the agenda, but I wanted to just use this time here upfront to share some thoughts on a doodle that I did last week because I don't think it fits neatly with the planned direction of our conversation later in the agenda. And I do want to put these ideas on the table while trying not to redirect or derail that agenda item later. So like all of you, the last couple of weeks has brought many more conversations with residents and with neighbors about the proposed Gaslight Investors development. I also had the opportunity to pop into the planning commission meeting for about the first hour to listen to their conversation. And in reflecting on these continued conversations, questions, differences of opinion, the common thread continues to be a near universal support of development on this land with, of course, strong disagreement about whether or not the current version meets the standards of approval. So one of the biggest issues for me continues to be the surface parking issue. I hear from residents that some of the biggest issues continue to be height and density of buildings. So I took kind of these two things and drafted out an idea, and Lori has it there to share. Essentially, as you can see, first of all, it looks very similar to the drawing that we have in front of us in our packets, right? And essentially, there's just two changes here. First, changing all of the surface parking from 90 degrees to zero degrees. So from all of those spaces kind of stacked in side by side backing out to the parallel type parking that we see in Gaslight today. And reducing the height of two of the buildings. The change in that parking allows for an expansion of the footprint of those buildings that could allow us to remove an additional story from building C and D and potentially to add space to the parking garage. I estimate, and obviously this is very rough, that the surface parking spaces that we lose by moving these to parallel spaces or zero degrees would be about 150 spaces. Where do those go? Or even additional parking could go in the expanded footprint of the parking garage. It also costs a lot of money to build parking and perhaps through the savings in not having to build so many spaces, the developer can contribute to the proposed garage on Bagley that is part of the high school development and really get us to kind of that shared parking solution that we described in our master plan. I think that these changes, while not perfect, like I said, it's a rough doodle, are, I think they're a much more compelling case for alignment to the master plan and the maintenance of the essential character of the area, which are kind of the two big issues that we continue to go around about. I'd still want to see a mobility study done to determine whether or not the density or the layout have implications related to the health, safety, and welfare of our residents and visitors. But I think that this demonstrates, and again, this is based on many, many conversations, that neither I nor the majority of folks currently expressing opposition are doing it in a manner that invites no resolution. And the ultimate goal of everyone is an approvable plan. So again, I share this not to stymie the process through delay. And of course, if folks want to take this up later, I'd be happy to talk more about it. But to bring us back to this idea that we have time to process and consider alterations to this plan that could get us to a point where we're all in agreement that the approval standards have met. The collaboration and the negotiation that would be required to get to a unanimous vote for approval would be the strong foundation that this project needs to make it through the rounds of future review, final site plan approvals, and challenges ahead to see this actually get built, which is ultimately the thing that everybody wants to see happen.
Thank you. Commissioner Schwartz, do you have anything to add?
Yeah. First of all, thank you, Kate. Sorry, Commissioner Skaggs. I thought that was very eloquent and important, and it's a weird time. I'm sure it's very hard for your family. It's also weird, I mean, it sounds exaggerated saying this, but just so people know, it has crossed my mind in these meetings, like, how mad are people? You know, how much do I have to watch the door? Okay, so to the more fun stuff, talking about parking. To Abby's point, thank you for bringing that up. I know we talked about that. We had a walk, ride, roll meeting, and the topic of parking came up, talking about a potential garage on Bagley and what that could mean for us. I look forward to having future discussions about that. My personal point of view is to keep that garage separate from any developer. I'd like to keep it between us and the schools, but to keep us on track here and keep an eye on the time, we can, I'll just leave it at that. Yeah, I just, our town's issues with parking are not because of the developer. We have issues on Wealthy Street regardless. We should not be relying on another private owner in the DNW parking lot. So I look forward to all of us working together to come up with a city-led solution to what is a community problem that we can fix for us and our students. The third point I'll get to later, we had a, my commissioner report is that we had a planning commission last week, directly ties into our third main agenda item, so I'll just save those comments for then. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said. I don't have anything to add. Mr. Charles?
Excuse me. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Allie, just congrats to the Parks and Rec team, another successful triathlon. Mr. Melville has put in a lot of long hours. I know he was around, running around Saturday with the cheer group, our cheer program that was stood up this year as well as soccer and things. So to Mr. Melville and his team for, I know it's been a couple busy weeks getting schools started up and whatnot. So with that, that's all I have.
Awesome. Yeah, I forgot to say, you know, congratulations as well. And also again, once again, the messaging, letting everybody know the route, the times, just a really good job. So everybody, I think, was well informed. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, so we can move on to the regular agenda items. First on the agenda is to consider authorizing a change order for the placement of artificial turf at Lakeside Elementary by EGRPS. That introduction is by Mr. Melville.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. Yes, before you this evening is a request from our partners at East Grand Rapids Public Schools to execute a change order for our playground improvement project. As you may recall, when we kicked off the project in 2023 over at Lakeside Elementary, their lower elementary school playground area did not have a dedicated green space. So students were, at recess time, were playing on the playground area and also sometimes on an asphalt surface that was also a shared parking lot space. So as part of the playground improvement project, our partners at the school district were able to reimagine the Lakeside parking lot to include a drop-off lane and redesign parking. And also, they were able to renovate that asphalt parking area into a green space for their lower elementary age kids to play on. Over the last two years, it's been well-used and well-loved by the kids at recess time, but due to the intensity of use, which is, you know, nine months a year, five days a week, times all the recesses and all the little pairs of feet that play soccer and all the things in that space, the grass in that area just hasn't been able to withstand the use that is required. So because we have a Maney Field turf replacement project that's coming up later this fall that also happens to share the contractor of our playground improvement project, we saw an opportunity for a change order to the project to renovate that, the grass space at Lakeside and to replace it with artificial turf as a change order to the project. The reason that it's before you tonight, even though as outlined in the memo, the school district is planning to pay for the entire cost of the project, it is underneath the city purchasing policy, it is a requirement to bring change orders of this magnitude back to all of you for your review. So happy to answer any questions you might have about the, about the process, but essentially the plan, if approved, will be for Katerburg Verhaegh, our playground improvement contractor, to, to go in and remove the, the natural grass surface and to replace that with an artificial grass surface that requires no maintenance. And the timeline for that would be somewhat parallel with the Maney Field restoration, which provides some efficiencies there by utilizing the contractors while they're in town doing the same level of work at multiple sites within the city. But happy to answer any questions you might have.
I'll start. Have the schools already approved the expenditure of these funds?
Yes, it's my understanding the Board of Education has approved the expenditure.
And just to provide some, some background, right, the finance team here on the city commission, finance committee was given this, right, just to provide just some additional background. We passed it back to the schools to come up with some alternative solutions, right, some possibilities to look to some potentially other solutions than the turf field that the schools at that time were already suggesting. It, it came back to us, I believe, after the schools had already approved the expenditure?
I don't recall that.
So this, this change order was, had just been approved, or, excuse me, the expenditure by the schools had just been approved and whatnot for consideration. The schools then reached out to us and said, can we, we'd like to do the, request the city amendments contract or do a change order to allow us to do this under Katerburg Verhaegh. So they've approved the expenditure.
So it's just, it's just my feeling that, right, with the, we as the finance committee voted to have the schools come up with other solutions, came back in front of us. We then, within the finance committee, elevated it back to the city, approving it to come in front of us here tonight. I guess my thought was, and I'll let the other members of the finance committee speak as well on that process, but in partnership between the two entities, city and schools, I would have really liked to have had an opportunity to have this full conversation with the city commission, I guess, prior to any sort of passage with, within the Board of Education. Puts an additional burden of pressure, I think, on, on the city commission to have this vote tonight, knowing that it's already been passed through the school side of things.
So can, I feel like I remember it happening slightly differently. So we were asked in finance whether we were open to sharing the costs 50-50, and I expressed hesitation, as I think we all did, wondering what happens when the next school wants turf, the next school wants turf? How much do we contribute? Where does it come from? Where does, where does all of this money come from, if, if, if? And I think that, that's what I thought the message that we were giving back to the schools was. And then they decided to self-fund the whole project independent of the city's funds. So what's before us now, I see as just a courtesy formality for us supporting our schools because we're not out a single dollar. This is because the Katerburg Verhaegh contract is with the city. We aren't, the city is not giving a dollar towards this. We are being immediately reimbursed from the schools. So they decided to self-fund the whole project and are just using our contract, which I personally am fine with, I understand you might not be, but I'm okay being the conduit through which they can get this contract completed and get that turf there for the kids that they've decided is what's right for that facility. I don't know.
Well, allow me to stand corrected. If that is not what is in front of us today, is a vote to approve a partial funding of the project, it's simply to use the change order within what we already have for Maney Field through the city. Thank you for that clarification.
Sure.
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. Are there any questions?
So through our joint facilities agreement, we have the turf fund for Maney Field and the football stadium. What's that going to look like for this turf? Is this included? Is the turf that's installed at Wealthy Elementary on the hill included? Are we upping our share of the turf replacement fund? How's, how's that look?
Sure. I can share that we haven't had additional conversations related to that specifically. And I know we haven't had a joint facilities committee recently, but, but I expect for those conversations to take place at, at that next joint facilities committee meeting.
Thank you.
I can speak to that, did come up in finance. We had that same question and the same answer. Essentially, we can, we can hash that out in, in joint facilities and access to it because that's the other part of it is, is that they're putting in this great field. It might be a place where a bunch of very small little soccer players would love to go after school. And it's a matter of, you know, is there a way to share that even with them self-funding it? We started that conversation, but a lot of that'll happen through joint facilities.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Melville? Okay, thank you. Okay, but please have a motion in a second on this agenda item.
So moved.
Public comment.
Pardon me?
So moved.
Okay, thank you. I'll second.
I want to offer just a couple comments about this that I know almost nothing about, but I think you all should think about it. Since you're at least being asked to give a cursory approval to it, even if not anything out of your pocketbook. One of the things that's bothered me for quite a while about artificial turf is it seems to have two problems. One is you have more injuries on it. Now, that seems to be, when you get up to high school, college, pros, they play at a very intense level. As busy as they are, I don't know that the elementary kids do that. The second problem, though, is the artificial turf has a whole group of carcinogens in it. And that's been studied and determined, and there's been, been some issues and lawsuits about people that got some kind of cancer or disease from that, including all the little black things that pop up, particularly see it, for example, in a football game or soccer field where somebody gets knocked down. And so I get the fact that it's cheaper, you don't have to keep watering, you don't have the fertilizer issues, you don't have the problem with how do you keep it green? But since you're going to put your name on it, I think you ought to at least ask yourself, has somebody addressed the carcinogen issue and not just said, oh, this is cheaper, let's do it? Because are you going to regret the fact someday when it comes back to bite that you're there with your names on it too, saying, oh, this is okay, go do it? Thank you.
Thank you. I had not had a chance to open a public comment to this, but at this time, if anyone else would care to open and make public comment to this agenda item, now is the time to do so. Dr. Patterson, welcome.
Hi, Nancy Patterson, 2104 Gorham Drive Southeast. I am board certified in pediatrics, psychiatry, and child and adolescent psychiatry. I worked at St. Jude Children's Cancer Research Hospital in Memphis. And yes, many turf grasses have been associated with childhood cancer. I, please, I ask you not to ignore that.
Thank you, Dr. Patterson. Would anyone else care to make comment to this agenda item? Mr. Anderson, welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
Jerry Anderson, 435 Edgemere Drive. This is, maybe it's been discussed because.
Please address your comments to the chair. That's me.
Mr. Melville brought the issue up.
Actually, it was, yes, if you could please make your comments to the chair.
I'm just wondering, when they tear up Maney Field, what do they do with the old stuff? And could that be gifted to Breton Downs or to Wealthy? Because if it's going to get thrown out and there's somebody who wants to use it, maybe we have an opportunity to save them a little money in the future by saying, if you can't afford a new field, take our old one. Just a suggestion.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Would anyone else care to make public comment to this agenda item? At this time, I'll close public comment and bring this up here. We do have a motion and a second. Commissioners, do we have any further comments?
Question, I mean, I knew nothing about any links between childhood cancers and, and artificial turf. And gracious, I spent a lot of time vacuuming those little black bits up from my own, my own house. Is this, a question, has this ever come up in joint facilities or any other conversations about our installation and use of turf?
I mean, we certainly have, have discussed that and looked at alternate options. There's, and technology is constantly evolving in the, in the artificial turf world. There's now new products that utilize like coconut fibers and different things that are relatively new to the market. So although, although we have looked at those for Maney specifically, and then most, more recently, as we consider the Lakeside option, the, the technology is just so new and isn't quite proven yet, and we have talked with other entities that have tried it and they've, they've had other trouble with the new technology. So I think in the future, there certainly will be more options for the community to consider. But at this time, they're, they're a little bit more limited than maybe what they will be in the next time the turf needs to be replaced.
Any other further comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes. Yes. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have to consider AT&amp;T lease amendment for placement of backup generator. That introduction is by deputy city manager, Mr. Lefave.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Commissioners. The request we have before you this evening, as noted, is a backup generator for AT&amp;T at our Woodlawn and Norfolk site, which is also the site of the city's water tower. That is the primary site for the city and general areas cellular communications throughout the, our community and parts of Grand Rapids and Kentwood. AT&amp;T's requested a permanent generator, generator on-site for communication enhancements when we're, we have power, down power outages. Instead of bringing in trailer units that they, they have to do, they would have one that's on-site that's connected right to natural gas. This is similar to what we have in place with Kent County Emergency Services for the 911 antennas that we have on the water tank too, which provides that service. So it's just a, a request for reliability and better service. We have connected with our partner communities in Grand Rapids and Wyoming and looked at what their different lease agreements, our amendments are. This is right in line with those. So this is something that they're doing more system-wide for, for that capability. So with that, I did provide just some additional background on that particular lease, that the lease runs through 2041. The First Amendment to that lease was in 2015 for that extension, which has the escalator clauses there. And I shared the dollar amount that we receive per year and that the additional compensation for that backup generator would be folded into that First Amendment compensation. So with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Lefave on this agenda item?
I do have a couple of questions. The first one is just, is kind of curiosity. So I haven't noticed any disruption to cellular service during power outages. At what point does that become an issue and are the trailers brought in to?
So they do have, most cellular communications have, have battery backups, but those are limited in, for durations of outages. So I think the, the issue is more around what they have in terms of contracts with third-party vendors in order to provide extended out, for service for extended outages. I don't know that they've experienced that here, but my understanding is that other, other parts of the countries where they've had disruptions like down south or coastal areas, Florida, where they've seen that if there's extended outages, they don't have the capability then for communication. So they've taken a look, more broader look at the rest of the country and those types of outages that are extended to try to mitigate those.
So current, so currently, basically, there's no mitigation in our area because we, we haven't experienced that type of extended outage, so we, they haven't brought in trailers, the battery power just.
They, they have in my tenure here. I know we've had them come in a few times to, to set up the, the city for our own controls. We have a backup generator that we actually partnered to share with Kent County that I noted for 911 service because, so we run into the same issue. Typically, those, those ones also run off of fuel that's onboard too, so you have to have people that monitor those to make sure they're full and bringing trucks to fill them, et cetera. The natural gas ones, they're all set to go, so you don't have to have that level of oversight, et cetera, too.
Okay. And just the last one, and this is for the residents who are nearby, I know when we experience out, power outages around here, the hum of the generators can become a little overwhelming, right? So how would the noise of this generator compare to what currently exists either through trailers or just the backup battery power?
So we have, again, the city's had in place, I think, since 2018, a backup generator with Kent County, as I noted. Those are much more quieter than the trailer-mounted. Those are much more quieter than the trailer mounted ones. The city has those as well. Those are diesel generators. Those are much, much louder and disruptive than these types of units. We also, as you see in the site plan, the sheet that would go in, we do have screening requirements. They're held at the same standard that others in the community are, so that screening does provide a little bit of a buffer there too. But as far as the decibel impact to anybody near there is far less than the portable diesel ones.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Lefave on this agenda item? Okay, thank you. This time, I can open up public comment. If there's somebody that would like to make comment to this agenda item, now is the time to do so. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Hello. My name is Erica Dunton. I live at 2100 Gorham Drive Southeast. I'm just simply here to tell you, I work for a company that provides solar generators that actually are quiet, fum-free, and safe to use inside. So if that might be something you guys are interested in learning more about, I'd be more than happy to help facilitate that conversation.
Thank you, Ms. Dunton. Would anyone else care to make a public comment to this agenda item? Okay, hearing none, I will close public comment and move it up here for a motion and a second on this agenda item. So moved?
Second.
Wonderful. So any further comments, Commissioners? Okay, then we could go to a vote. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have the Gaslight Investors PUD Amendment Discussion and Introduction. That introduction is by city manager Charles. Just for the benefit of those in attendance this evening, we're gonna have a normal introduction to this agenda item. Then Mr. Charles and Mr. Gianotti will review feedback from the Planning Commission, go over that with the City Commission, and then at that time, I will take public comment in an effort to be consistent with the last time we had this agenda item on the, on the agenda. I will take public comment before then the City Commission has their discussion on the finishing of the language. So, that being said, you can introduce.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple things before we get started, wanted to clarify, again, a couple procedural questions. At the end of the last city commission meeting, there was a motion to table the discussion. Admittedly, we're all kind of been there, been at it a little bit longer, and we should have corrected that that should have been a motion to postpone, not to table. So with that, there's not a need to have a motion this evening to remove it from the table. City attorney and I spent quite a bit of conversation going back through Robert's rules. We actually ended up talking to a parliamentarian about that specific issue. So with that said, we have, Planning Commission met last week. Mr. Gianotti has presented in his memo kind of a summary of different things out there from them, and were within the part of the discussion in regards to that. There were kind of four areas that we had identified from the feedback from the September 2nd meeting. Should the social hub space be linked to specific phases of development or left a standalone area? Airplay or construction of the parking lot independently, the trigger clock, the question about public access, things of that nature, and then refinement of the street and sidewalk maintenance language. In addition to that, there was a recommendation from Planning Commission for City Condition 3, that there'd be required facade articulations and building modulations for buildings over three stories and for at least 80% of the building facade, and then also potentially clarification of what upper floors are for the step back in regards to that. Between the time that the packet was issued and this evening, we had an opportunity to talk with Gaslight Investors representatives, just to update the commission and the public. In regards to the social hub question, that, there's an indication that, looking at some sort of commitment that upon completion of C and D, that the social hub would be completed with 12 months. They did share with us that, that area is what they refer to as a lay-down area, basically staging construction for C and D on that piece. So just to provide some context of what they were thinking in regards to that. And we do have Mr. Corby from Integrated Architects and Mr. Lennon, who was Gaslight Investors attorney to help facilitate the, the resolution ordinance language. So they also indicated, as we talked through the public issue, that there was an openness to some sort of language, and we don't have that ready for this evening, but be part of the resolution is condition noting that they will continue the practice of having spaces for civic events with appropriate approvals. Well, we'll, as I said, we don't have a specific proposal, but just to update the commission on that, and we did talk about the articulation issue, and they are willing to add language to the number three on the facade articulations. There's a little bit of concern in regards to modulations in regards to that, but they willing to consider facade articulations. And then lastly, and before, on the, on the dais for each of you, is as we talked through, and this actually was born out of the Planning Commission conversation about the incubator space of, while they are something that's popular for this time, and we see them, you know, throughout the area, trying to look to the future of five, 10, 15, 20 years of, did we want, does everybody want to lock that in and then discover five years from now there's a better model or different, whatnot? So they have provided an updated language that kind of, the social hub is still dedicated that, but where the incubators were, we said, multi-purpose flex space, noting the incubator is a potential. So that acknowledges that what we're looking at, but also doesn't end up in a situation where, okay, this isn't working, not be kind of beholden to the language of it's only gotta be an incubator, so. But with that, we'll, those are the things. Mr. Gianotti, was there anything else that you could think of?
I think you did a very good job of summarizing the Planning Commission. I would just add that, you know, the Planning Commission did, all members that were present did vote to recommend the approval with these recommendations added to that for your consideration.
Commissioner Schwartz?
I'm checking my notes, but I think, I think you have summarized it very well. I also wanted to add that I did ask a little bit more about the environmental concerns, and Mr. Lefave was nice enough to let me go on and ask about that, because we, we were sitting on the Planning Commission with people who are experts in their field, and I wanted to know, you know, sometimes when we're up here, we're like, this feels important, right? Like, we want to be environmentally sound in this decision. So I posed the question to those experts, like, what does that mean? And are we, are we saying enough to cover the bases? And I think there was a little bit of like shop talk between Doug and a couple guys at the other end who are in the industry, and ultimately, I, my read of it was, we are in a good position. Some things are just unsaid in these documents because they are the baseline requirements. It's how things get built, it's how your house gets built, it's how any commercial building gets built. Doesn't have to be in, in the ordinance amendment or the resolution for them to have to make sure that stormwater runoff is going to the right place. So I, just to add, I was, I was personally satisfied with that discussion and happy to bring it to them and have them weigh in on it.
Great, thank you. Any other updates?
So that's kind of where we're at. Ms. Hoff, did you have any?
No.
Okay. My notes were correct, so. With that, Madam Mayor-
Dr. Lefave, public comment?
Yep. If you'd like to go to public comment, then-
Okay, perfect. So at this time, I will open this agenda item to public comment. I'd like to just make a few housekeeping reminders. If you could please keep your comments to three minutes, in only three minutes, out of respect to everyone in attendance, and so that everyone gets to say what they came here to say. Please address your comments to me, the chair, and then also, please remember we're neighbors. In your comments and in your behavior, please be polite. I'm almost finished, Ms. Baxter. Please be courteous. Again, remember we're neighbors, no clapping or booing. The hope is that everyone feels comfortable coming forward and saying what they have to say. So with that, we'll start with public comment. Please state your name and address for the record after you come up. Come on up.
Ladies and gentlemen, who are in attendance, city staff, chief, ladies and gentlemen of the commission and mayor, my name is Judith Baxter. I live on Hall Street in East Grand Rapids. I'm a long-term resident. I've been speaking at many meetings here. I also attended the Planning Commission meeting, and I wanted to bring one point to your attention. I heard in the Planning Commission's that they are, they are talking about or planning, and the Planning Commission approved, the development of this concept plan in stages, three, three-year stages with an opportunity to expand to four years, which means this development could last for 12 years, which would turn Gaslight into a construction zone for 12 years. And it would remind you, what that means is, somebody in kindergarten at age five will go through their whole career and graduate from East Grand Rapids High School while the whole Gaslight Village is a construction zone. I think that's something to keep in mind. Originally, this plan was supposed to be developed in three to four years, but the plan from, I heard in the Planning Commission now, is that these, this phasing is gonna drag this thing out for three, to three phases of three years with an opportunity to extend it to four. There's a lot that can happen to the developer in a 12-year time period. What happens if he goes bankrupt? What happens if something happens to the, to the market and financing and everything else? And then where are we? We've got a half-finished construction zone of 12-year duration. I ask you to consider that as you discuss this plan. I don't think that's acceptable. I don't think that's beneficial to the community. It's definitely not beneficial to our schoolchildren who have had the benefit of an excellent school system without having to go through a construction zone to go to and from school or to and from the high school. One of the other points that was, of concerning there, I wanted to bring to your attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Baxter. Next person, please. Mr. Anderson, please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, I'm Jerry Anderson. I live at 435 Edgemere Drive. Commissioner Skaggs, I thank you for your opening comments on that, you know, cementing community starts at home, not at the national level, so I hope we all agree with that. I think we do. My point of emphasis for today is this, that you are being asked to approve a plan that really has no benefit to our community. According to our city code, providing a recognizable community benefit is the purpose of PUD legislation. Please note that there's nothing in the city code that lists optimizing developer profits or avoid avoiding developer lawsuits as a reason for approving a PUD. So we were presented by the Planning Commission for supposed benefits to the people of East Grand Rapids. One of those was high-quality architectural design. So far, what we've seen are 70-foot-tall, flat walls of glass and steel. The city has said that they expect to see high-quality design in the future, but they're not going to require it now. That's not a benefit. The second presented benefit was provision of open spaces or public plazas and features. This plan has far less green space than the surrounding condos, apartments, or residential areas, and it has no public space at all. The developer has refused to include the word "public" in the proposal. Again, that is not a benefit. The third benefit presented was an effective transition between higher and lower density uses. The plan as it stands has 35-foot-tall, two-story commercial buildings transitioning immediately to 70-foot-tall, five-story buildings with high residential density. That does not seem to be highly effective, and I certainly don't see a community benefit in that plan. And the fourth benefit that they presented was consolidation of poorly dimensioned parcels. This is a six-acre parcel. It is not an oddly shaped corner lot where you're trying to squeeze a garage in with a house. There's an infinite variety of building orientations that are possible here, and the massive differences between the initial proposal 21 years ago and the latest proposal make it clear that there's a lot of ways to approach this. The parcel's history of commercial use shows that it is buildable without a PUD variance. This is not a community benefit, and a PUD is not needed to build on these two lots. Now, 21 years ago, a referendum was passed that divided the community because of one key community benefit, and that was the promise of $625,000 a year of tax dollars. You've introduced this as a brownfield authority project, which means that we can't even count on that benefit at this time. Please vote to benefit the community and insist on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Next, please. Is there anyone else that would like to make comment to this agenda item? Now is the time to do so, please. Nope.
Good evening. My name is Suzanne McCarty, and I reside at 1138 Kennesaw Drive. I just wanted to raise a concern that I've had, and I've had it for all along, because I know the developer has worked very, very closely, and it feels like in a way, you know, we have our ordinances, we have our zoning laws, and I feel positive after tonight's conversation, but leading up to this, I've been really disheartened to know that the opers had a lot of influence on making our zoning laws fit his requirements. You know, for example, we actually, you know, we're looking at these drawings, and it really looks like a concrete jungle. There's not a lot of open space, and we talk about character of the community, and there's many things that make us unique as a community, but when you really even want to look at the facts, we actually have in our own city of East Grand Rapids, a plan for tree planting, where people can actually, I'm aware of this, I know that it exists, where on your sidewalks, if you want to plant a tree, there's certain trees the city will let you, you'll go ahead and plant, and it'll actually help you with that cost. And that's really to keep our street-lined trees. And so I look at this proposal, and there's no green space, and there's nothing that really complements what we currently have, and what currently our values are to keep it as a really quaint, neat community that draws people in. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. McCarty. Anyone else care to make comments? Good evening, Ms. Westphal. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Patricia Westphier, and I live at 2311 Wealthy Street, condo number 18. I kind of feel like we're reaching the end of the process, okay? We're, we're getting closer and closer to making decisions, and I know that there are many things that have been, that were kind of locked in from the PUD 21 years ago that maybe cannot be changed. I wish that the 107 units was one of the things that we were locked into instead of the 147. That additional 40 units, if we could eliminate those, it would help address some of the other issues like pedestrian, student safety, and traffic congestion, environment, that we're just so concerned about, and parking. Anyway, I just wish that you would reconsider and try not to cram that additional 40 units that were not part of the original PUD, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Westphier. Dr. Patterson, please state your name and address for the Westphal.
Oh, time's already started. Nancy Patterson, 2104 Gorham Drive Southeast. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. City Manager, thank you for your time and attention. It must be difficult for you to balance your jobs, your families, your constituents, and the burden of understanding the enormity of the responsibility you all carry when it comes to the decision to amend this PUD originally approved 20 years ago with a purpose very different from that proposed today. I watched the video of the last meeting, initially for clarification and information, then I stepped back and watched as a psychiatrist. I could not help but notice repeated lapses in good common sense communication skills, which did seem to worsen by the hour as time went by. And I grew in, it was just painful. I won't go into anything more than that. I would suggest some training on communication so some Commissioners don't get shut down repeatedly. We- repeatedly. We elders bring wisdom to this community. I pointed out my official title as Dr. Patterson last meeting merely to point out that this community is full of educated, experienced people. But do you understand that we've been lied to all our lives by the wealthy and those in elected office? From the Vietnam Conflict, Pentagon Papers, to trickle-down economics, never worked, not working now, to the Gulf War, Iraqi War, Afghanistan War, where were those weapons of mass destruction? And the lies continue today. We have all been hurt repeatedly by this dishonesty and have had to pick up the pieces and try to learn to not fall for this stuff again. I personally sense dishonesty in this whole process. If the developer wanted to build this thing, his designated rep would be here on bended knee at every commission meeting, asking what he can provide next. In his business plan, he should know how many housing units, how many bedrooms he wants to build, what kind of businesses he wants, and their parking needs, and present previous soil studies that I know have been done, and he would indicate how he would handle stormwater runoff from this massive, concrete jungle. He says he wants to build. I suspect he does not bring that info here because he does not intend to build, right? As if he has other plans yet to be uncovered. I wonder if he has no intention to replace the parking garage he tore down. I don't know, but this all feels intentionally obfuscated, and we're being jerked around. Please stop. Get rid of any brownfield designation in the East. If the developer is committed to building, reduce the phasing. Back to what was discussed before. Put an expiration date on this 2004 PUD so it cannot go forward in perpetuity if construction does not start at this time. And please consider limiting these meetings to maybe a few hours for your mental health. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Patterson. Would anyone else care to make public comment at this time? Mr. Decker, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. David Decker, 925 Belclaire. And yesterday, I was a Detroit Lions fan. I wasn't going to yell, I wasn't going to yell, but oh, it was a great game. My apologies, the voice is a little harsh. I've offered public comment regarding character as it applies to standards B, C, and D at several recent meetings. On August 4th, at the beginning of the meeting, Commissioners Schwartz, Burdick, and Wesley referred to information that would be coming from Mr. Huff regarding character, which is key to standard C and D, and they all stated that they wanted to discuss this once it was available. The Commissioners indicated they wanted to discuss this when the public was aware and after getting the information, and they referred to an email they had received that afternoon. This is in the first 10 minutes of the August 4th meeting. They were clear. They wanted to discuss character and the standards after they received additional information, and at a time the public would be notified. The PUD was not on the August 18th agenda. The September 2nd City Commission agenda included Mr. Huff's written response and a memo from Paul LeBlanc, the city planning consultant. It's the information that the Commissioners said they were waiting for to have a standards discussion. Residents would like to know when that will take place. After the August 18th meeting, Mayor Favel was kind enough to talk with me, one-on-one. I had submitted a Freedom of Information Act request for a copy of the standard forms that the City Commissioners had planned to complete on July 21st, when five Commissioners and the mayor discussed the standards. The FOA request was denied. The mayor explained because completing the forms was optional, and thus the city doesn't have the completed forms to provide. I'll say that during this discussion, we agreed that we're on different sides of this issue. I believe the current plan does not meet the standards, and the mayor believes it does and should be approved. She asked me if I wanted the city to be engaged in an expensive lawsuit. I do not believe denying the concept plan will result in the city being sued. The concept plan clearly does not meet the standards, and I'm confident that an open discussion by the Commissioners, with the public available, will reach that conclusion. Again, residents would like to know when that discussion will take place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment to this agenda item, please? Now's the time to come forward. Mr. Deems, welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. I'm Nile Deems. I live at 701 Laurel Circle. A few thoughts on this project. I have a few of those, as you know. Since January, you all have listened to a number of citizens tell you what they thought about this project. A full house at the Performing Arts Center, many people at your meetings here, lots of letters, emails. Those running about 85% or more against this project because it's too intense, it's too dense, it's too congested. The idea is to back it down, get it down to the scale it ought to be, get some public space in there, get some green space, open it up to the public, and that's it. Nobody's saying, "Don't develop it." It's fix this development, and there seems to be a hesitancy to do this. There seems to be a push by the staff. A lot of times, it seems like the city manager is the developer's spokesman, and there's a feeling that by some of the Commissioners, we need to push this through, get done with it, because somehow that'll open up the door to do whatever. And the responses to the people opposed are consistently, "Well, we can just give it a concept approval, and then we'll sort out things later." That's certainly not the way I've discovered you ought to operate in the business world or the legal world. Please consider all the major issues and things that could come up and sort them out upfront. I can promise you that the developer thinks a concept approval gives him a lot more leeway and control than you think it does. And if you think you can just draft contracts that take care of it, well, I don't think so. Anybody that asks me as an attorney to draft a contract to protect him, I told them, "Good luck." I can't do that. If you're not dealing with somebody that, you know, you trust and can deal with, you're in trouble. Once you give that conceptual approval, he's off and running the horses out of the barn. I think you need to believe that. Please listen to your citizens, what they're telling you, and sort out these issues. Don't think you're going to sort it out later, and you don't even know who you'll be dealing with later. Is it going to be this developer? Maybe you like him a lot, so you want to go forward with him, but is he going to be here in five years, 10 years? He's been around for 20. How long is he going to hang on to this? He tells us how well he did Breton Village, but he sold that. He's not there anymore. How long will he be here? I think you've got to think down the road, and since you can't handle those, you're handling this now for the city on behalf of all the citizens. You have to deal with those issues. How many of you are going to be around for that 10- or 12-year build-out? You all going to be sitting here again? Are you going to be gone? Who's going to be here? How many of you remember the 2004 fuss over this? 2006, '08, '18, '20? I mean, look how much we've been through, and what's the history of those of you that are sitting up here in a memory of that? I can remember it all. I think you ought to be more careful. Thank you.
Ms. Dunton, please state your name and address for the record.
Hello. My name is Erica Dunton. I live at 2100 Gorham Drive, Southeast. I'm here to speak tonight as an alum, a resident, a parent, and someone who has a deep love for this community and has followed this project closely since its inception. Gaslight Village redevelopment has been on the table for over 20 years. It's changed names, developers, and designs. Yet, here we all still sit, still asking the same questions. The original PUD promised condos for older residents, allowing for new families to enter our community, a walkable and thriving downtown. But from what we've seen so far, instead, what we've had is high turnover, paid parking, persistent vacancies, and a lack of engagement from the developer. The most recent version of the project didn't resurface because of public demand. It returned after changes to the brownfield redevelopment funding legislation. That speaks volumes. Even now, we see vague notices, closed-door meetings, and Commissioners left with more questions than answers. Residents are frustrated. We deserve better. This isn't just about architecture. It's about trust. It's about how we plan, how we preserve, and how we protect what makes East Grand Rapids so very special to each one of us and our families. We've invested, as residents, both financially and emotionally, but that return has been one-sided. To our city leaders, you are elected to represent us, the residents, your constituents. If this process isn't transparent, if voices are not heard at the center, and if the outcomes don't reflect our community values, then something is deeply, deeply broken. Let's start over. Let's lead with transparency and finish with pride. Let's get this done, and let's get this done right the first time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dunton. Would anyone else care to make public comment? Okay. Hearing none, I will now close public comment and bring this agenda item up to the Commission for discussion. I believe it's most prudent to start with discussion of the tweaks and with the ordinance language.
Excuse me. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm taking a little throat. Kind of from the discussion at the last meeting, Mr. Huff did make the change on, so I'm on page one of the redline version of the amended ordinance. About halfway down, P, it says, "The developer may construct up to seven buildings and a parking structure," clarifying the eight different structures. So that was included. I think, Mr. Huff, correct me if I'm wrong, if there's any other changes that you made from the September 2nd meeting?
The language about the phasing found at the bottom of page one and top of page two, and that really deals primarily with how the parking structure was going to be handled through that phasing. It doesn't change the number of phasing or any of that. It just talks about that the parking structure is not necessarily going to be included in a phase. It may be a separate build.
And just to expand on that, and Commissioner Schwartz can probably speak better to this than I, is Planning Commission spent quite a bit of time on the phasing language and I think kind of ended up by the end of the conversation went...
We went in a big circle and ended up, I think, with the same resolution, which was, yes, we're okay with parking being separate, knowing that it has, the parking garage would have to be constructed in order for either C or D to be constructed. So like FG, FG and H can be built independently, but in order to satisfy the parking needs of the PUD as it stands today with buildings A and B, and then if the amendment were allowed, and then the parking demands of C and D would necessitate the parking spaces in the parking structure. So parking structure is a gatekeeping item to C and D, and so we weren't quite concerned about that, like triggering a whole new time period when the practicalities of it are that it has to be built before C and D.
I'm sorry. Sorry, Commissioner. Trying to make that easier.
It's actually kind of nice on the eyes. So, yeah, and the economic incentive for them to build the parking structures isn't there if they aren't building C and D. So having talked in a very big circle about it for a long time, I think we landed in the same spot.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation.
Yeah.
Sorry. For those in the public who are wondering, why can't the city manager figure out the lighting scheme? We updated some software, and it doesn't operate quite the way like a normal light switch, so.
I'm just trying to get the light off of that.
Yeah, off that thing. There's a delay. So, please continue from the point of my apologies.
Are we having discussion on that, on the topic of the phasing as it relates to the parking garage?
I think, did we... Madam Mayor? Did you have any other items you wanted to point out?
No, just to note that those were the tweaks that were in this version.
The three. That's one. Okay, so really the two then. Okay. Okay, so these are the slight tweaks. Was there anything else you wanted to bring up from planning before we start the discussion?
I guess, does it make sense to just go like, I don't want to say line by line, but I could bring up maybe what we talked about as we get to each and then section, or do you want me to just go through and talk about it?
We could probably, as we go through, you could probably update us on, you know, or however you think is best to handle that as we go through this. Probably more as we go.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So those are the only comments we have, so.
Okay, okay.
On the ordinance.
Okay. Did you have anything from planning to add about the seven buildings and the parking structure?
No, I think, I think I'm starting to actually blend that meeting with our last meeting and trying to keep mentally straight with which meeting it happened in. I recall at some point having the conversation about, you know, do we, actually, this was Planning Commission. Do we need to include seven buildings, a parking structure, a social hub, a pedestrian path, all of those things as shown in the concept plan? And just for clarity, the understanding there was because it references the drawing of the concept plan, we don't need to specifically identify every piece of the drawing to make it mean what we all want it to mean, to outline what is allowed to be built. Is that correct, Mr. Huff?
Yes, I would agree with that. I'm looking at my notes as well.
Okay. Then, the other, the other item that came up that I did email today about was teasing out the idea, this came up in Planning Commission, about how do we make sure that, like, the social hub is built? And so we, I'm not sure that we have any specific language on that, but the idea was that we wanted to make sure that we didn't come to a point where, you know, we all have good intentions today, but I think as some people pointed out, property can change ownership, and how do we safeguard this? And how do we put pen to paper to everything that we're all thinking today? So how do we make sure that we don't get down the path where, let's say, FG, HR built first, a parking structure is built, C is built, and the clock expires, and no social hub was ever built? And, you know, I'll speak for myself in saying, for me, that is a really central component of this plan to me. It's having that public space. You know, if you saw the renderings at the last meeting, there were trees involved, there's green space, so I'm trying to make sure that that is accomplished. And so how do we put pen to paper on that? And is that something, the second question is, is that something that belongs in the ordinance versus the resolution versus an operating agreement and, you know, opening that up to the experts for that?
Yeah, I think there has been discussion about that potentially being a City Commission Condition Number Eight that would specify that and indicate that, basically the language you just said, which is that as a condition of approval, there's going to have to be language in that final PUD agreement that would mandate that that structure be built if C or D was completed and there were no longer opportunities to complete any more building because it lapsed.
Okay. And this was not, to my knowledge, was not specifically identified in the Planning Commission meeting, but thinking it through again today and this weekend, I would like to also include the... to also include the north-south pedestrian path in that same bundle. So again, if we find ourselves down the road where, say, D does not get built, I would like that there to be a triggering event so that the north-south pathway, if not already completed, would have to be completed. Just kind of my thoughts on that. I don't know if anybody else?
How would an approach like that work when we anticipate they're going to be bringing us final plan approvals in phases? So it's not a holistic final plan approval process. It's, hey, we're ready to build building D. So we say whenever, I don't understand how we would preserve that if we wait until a final planning process.
The way it was discussed is the trigger would be that they have time to build those, but if they run out of time because they lapse under the language of Section SIS, that's, those two things still need to be constructed. They don't have to finish building any more buildings if they don't want to, or at least they won't be able to without coming back and asking for changes. But both the walking parkway and the social area, if C or D were built. Now, if they don't build either C or D, there's really no purpose in building the social area because it would be in the middle of a parking lot. But if either one of those is completed, but they have no time left to finish the phase of C or D, then they have to still build the social hub.
So having said all of that, do we want to hold on discussing this? Oh, sorry. I was going to say, we don't hold on discussing it until the.
Give him a chance. Did you want to have something to add, sir?
Well, I'm not sure. We'll see. First of all, my name's Pat Lennon. I'm an attorney. I represent the applicant with the Hahnemann Law Firm. Nice to be with you tonight. I appreciate the comments of Commissioner Skaggs at the very beginning. I think those are all thoughts that we all take to heart, especially this week, and especially those of us that attend these meetings, you know, on a weekly basis, as I do all over this state. So it's appreciated that you would recognize that and bring that to this group, and appreciate the group for being so civil and thoughtful in their comments tonight. Thinking about the questions relating to the social hub, I think the conversation really relates to, we don't necessarily know when buildings C and D will be built, but what we do know is that to build them, the social hub area needs to be used as a staging place. So I believe that the concept that was discussed was a notion that when the last of those two buildings get built, then the social hub would have to be built within, I think, sometimes.
Twelve months.
Twelve months after completion of the second building. So I know that the applicant is prepared to accept that as a condition, and as Mr. Huff points out, if the clock runs out on building C and D, then, you know, we're back to where we were, so.
So just to follow up on that, you're saying C and D like they would be a package project? And I don't want to hold you.
Not at all.
I know, I know.
No.
But so my point was, what if C is completed and D is not and the clock runs out? Because I understand the staging area, and I wouldn't want them to have an unsafe zone. But let's say, you know, FG, H, parking structure, C is built, intend to build D, doesn't happen, clock runs out, you know, the PUD expires. Is, have you spoken about that, you know, teasing out what that would look like?
I think that's a really good question, and I don't know that we've thought it through that far. What I think we can do is, you know, hoping that this is set for first reading, or this is the first reading, and then we're back with final language, we can have something that, you know, addresses that comment. I'm not sure that we talked out that far as if we just built C and not D. If we did that, bear in mind, there'd be a lot more open space already, and you wonder about, you know, necessarily whether the social hub is currently envisioned. Makes sense if there's that hole there. I mean, my feeling would be is that there, if that scenario arose, there might be other ideas we might have that deal with the building D space, or vice versa, if D's built and not C. For purposes of concept plan approval though, today, you know, we think that, you know, this vision is what is going to happen, and there's a plan for carrying it out, and I think the group is excited to do it. And you know they're excited because where the social hub is now, I believe there used to be a building E, and they've eliminated an entire building, which is, I think, a remarkable commitment to this project and the extra open space it provides. So I hope that's considered. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm here for, there's other questions as well.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Lennon.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I know that's the intent, to be fair to the developer, I know that's the intent. I just try to plan for all the what-ifs. So what I was going to say before that is, I don't want to derail us because I know that you said stay on topic with the ordinance language.
Yeah, I thought, right, we start with the ordinance language.
So that's more of a condition in the resolution, so.
Resolution, right.
Should we, without using the word table, hold that piece of discussion for later?
Sure, yeah, we can.
Okay.
That's a great point. That's probably more in the resolution discussion.
So we'd be circling back to the, what happens with the phasing around the parking garage?
No.
No.
That's here.
That's here?
Yeah.
So is it conceivable that, even though, of course, you want places for your residents and patrons of the businesses to park, we've had difficulty with the developer and the applicant in the past on parking, is it conceivable that C and D could get built but not the parking garage? Under the language?
Well, you can answer as well, Pat, but let me take that first. There's two reasons that can't happen. One is that there is other language in this agreement that mandates that they have to have enough parking built for any building before it can be operated. And so, and they could not meet that for either C or D, much less both of them, without at least beginning construction on the parking garage at a minimum of one level and perhaps two, depending, if it's both buildings, there'd be two. So that would prohibit that from happening. I think the other issue that is relevant to that is they do have leases with tenants that require parking places to be available for those tenants. If they tear up that area, which is where those parking places currently are, they would be in breach of their lease unless they had some place for those people to park on site.
So then why the additional language with the parking garage then at all? About it not necessarily fitting neatly into any phase? I mean, why include that language?
Well, happy to address that. You know, it's a remote possibility, but I don't, and I'm not as familiar with the number of units in F, H, and G, but it's conceivable that one of those buildings might be able to be built, and it wouldn't trigger a need for a parking structure. So I think that's part of it. And there'd be sufficient surface parking, and some of those, I think, might even have garages. So I think that's why that is.
Yeah, I think we were specifically told that if FG and H are built first, which is, there's no decision on that, as I understand it, but if they are, none of those structures need the parking garage, and they would not prematurely construct parking garage because it's probably one of the most expensive things to build.
Agreed.
So, but the parking lot would then continue as open space during that timeframe, and they would service their tenants' needs through the existing parking lots.
One of the other things we discussed in Planning Commission with people in the industry was about, I had asked the question, like, are these phases sort of reasonable? Because, you know, if we are, I feel like we keep talking about FGH as a bundle, probably because it stands alone, but we allow for three phases. And so if, let's say FGH were completed first, and the draft as it stands now allows for three phases, if the parking structure weren't independent of a phase, it would start the clock on phase two, and if they needed C and D to be phased separately, they'd be out of phases, perhaps to get it done safely, was one of the suggestions, because you need the social hub likely. And I'm repeating with people in the industry of sad, I'm not, not in the construction field, but they were saying they would need the social hub as a staging area to make D and C work. So allowing the parking, there weren't any red flags in Planning Commission from people who do this kind of work saying, oh, I don't know, they're trying to sneak in an extra phase by having the parking garage separate. It was like, nope, that makes sense, might need those phases, and we know from this conversation and before, the parking structure has to happen if C or D is to happen. Does that help?
Right.
I'm trying to relay, like, what our residents were giving me.
Yeah, and I was here in the meeting for part of that conversation.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
I'm just, I'm wondering about complexity. I'm hoping it doesn't add for the city or developer additional complexity. I could see why the phase concept is in front of us. And then I think once I understood the dynamics, I'm just back to the beginning of, does this create additional burdens potentially for usage of the entire development? And does it potentially displace parking throughout the rest of the community for a time where, again, we've just, within my time on commission the last two years, we've dealt with parking, and I'm just trying to ensure as best we can that there's enough spaces for our residents, and especially for the patrons and residents of the new development, so. I don't know if there's a hard and fast answer and takeaway on any of that. Can only plan out things to a certain degree, but I guess I'm good with that topic for now.
All right. Any other comments? Anyone down here have any comments on this, or you're good with the language, the tweaks and the changes that were made? Good?
I'm good. I don't have any questions.
No? Okay, thank you. Okay, so next was the second tweak, which was, oh, well, the phases, we've already done that.
Nope.
Okay, well, I guess we've kind of discussed the tweaks that were made.
Yep, so it's, I don't know if there's any other.
Yeah. Any other comments or recommendations on this language?
Okay, I guess, at this point, I'm comfortable. I feel like I've read this ordinance language 100 times and discussed it thoroughly, so I'll just go ahead and make the motion to introduce the PUD ordinance amendment as discussed this evening with those changes as discussed.
Second.
The second, okay. All right, so we have a motion in a second to introduce the agenda item. Commissioners, if we have any final comments, we can take them at this time. I guess just succinctly, maybe I can just start at one end, any kind of final comments, and go to the end. Commissioner Skaggs, do you have any final comments before we go to a vote?
I suppose I perhaps should have asked a question, so I do apologize. I thought we were going to go through everything before we had an introduction, so forgive me. The social hub is also extremely important to me that that is built, and I did not understand thoroughly why it made the most sense for it to be a condition rather than part of the amendment.
I think, because once again, it's primarily an issue of timing.
Okay.
It, what we've basically discussed here is that if everything, when it's drawn up on a blackboard, is going to be built when C and D are completed, and if something happens, for instance, Commissioner Schwartz's suggestion that C or D doesn't get built, the thought was that we need to come up with some language to address that because we would concur with your statement that it would be important to have that or some similar social space still created.
So I guess the order of operations of making it a condition versus part of the resolution, like, or, excuse me, the amendment, ensuring that it's in there versus within the PUD agreement, and maybe it will be, and we just haven't gotten there.
I think it would be in the PUD agreement, it just wouldn't be in this ordinance.
It would not be in this ordinance amendment, but it would be a condition in the, where, I'm sorry.
Right, so the PUD agreement comes after, or as part of final site plan approval, and there has to be a signed agreement.
And that's where the condition will be laid out.
And until that agreement is signed by all parties, nothing can issue. Can't be any building that can be commenced.
Can I ask one thing, Jim?
Yes.
It's also in the concept. So we're locked into the plan.
Thank you.
So that, that's.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons you got the revised map tonight showing the social district, is that that, because that also, as you may recall, there's already language in the resolution adopting these drawings as the.
I guess what I'm saying is it just, I was having trouble following how making it a condition of final approval, when we know it's not going to be built until the very, very last thing makes sense versus having it part of, you know, the black and white of what we are agreeing to as far as the amendment goes.
If I may, one of the things that I think we were discussing earlier, and Mr. Lennon may also be able to speak to this, is in the resolution that adding a condition under city conditions number eight, speaking specifically to the social hub. So it'll be in the document, these documents, is my understanding of kind of where, the question is, no, we're not going to, excuse me, it's the, the thought is, we would have a condition eight, and that addressed the question on the social hub, in addition to the development agreement and all this.
And that will all be together?
Yes, yes. In addition to, so you have the drawing, what will be in the resolution with is a potential number eight to say, here's, let's talk about the social hub and tease this out a little bit more and have that.
No, thank you, thank you. I just held my question because I thought we were going to go through everything, so thank you.
I do have a question related to this, though, if I may.
Welcome. I'm going to kind of just go down the row for, we have a motion in a second, and I'm going to go down the row for final comments, and then your question can come up at that point. Commissioner Burdick, did you have anything to add or anything?
I mean, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended this proposal. I believe our task tonight is only to introduce this amendment as a first reading. I want to echo and support incorporating condition eight as a, to ensure that a social hub is completed with building C or D, or if, for instance, one of those is not built. I think it's incredibly important that that's part of this project, so I'm very much in support of making sure that that happens. And I look at this as advancing this, keeps the process on track, and lets us finalize those details before we get to the final vote in three weeks.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wesley?
Okay, I'm going to echo Ryan. His comments are great. I think that the, you know, the Planning Commission, coming from that, you know, they're unanimously in support. I also find it in order, so I'm in support of the first reading. Again, like Ryan mentioned, that it is the first reading, so I'm taking that into consideration too, so I'm feeling comfortable moving forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hunter?
I think like Commissioner Skaggs, I just want to know what is fully on the table tonight. That is a very wide-open question, so I'll try to be a little bit more specific. This is a first reading of this document, the ordinance amendment language for the PUD and proposed concept plan. We're agreeing that during a subsequent meeting, potentially next meeting, maybe we could get some idea for the timeframe around, you know, the next steps, that this document come back in front of us for a final reading and possible approval or denial. Is that correct?
Correct.
That is correct. And realize, we don't, we have not written the language that you're asking for, and that's something we tend to do promptly this week. If we determine that there's a reason based on your concerns to move it to the ordinance, that's a possibility. This would not preclude that from happening. My initial reaction would be it'd be in the conditions, but I'm certainly willing to take your comments into consideration.
So does that mean that even though this document will change in terms of its wording, that this is still the initial first reading?
Yes.
Okay.
So my first question, to clarify the process that we are in the midst of here, I've heard you say that we all get to have a final comment, and then there's a vote on this, and then assuming that happens, what do we do next on the agenda, or is that the end of this meeting?
No, then we would move on to the discussion of the resolution.
Okay. So my next question, before I get to comments, is that this has been brought up before, but on page one of the ordinance amendment, the final sentence in that first paragraph says, "This adopting resolution is incorporated into this amendment." So I'm not sure how we take action on these separately, or maybe you could clarify how we take action on these separately if the two things are incorporated together.
We actually have to take. We, we actually have to take, um, action on them separately because the ordinance is the only thing that requires two readings. The resolution, as you may recall, actually has language that adopts the ordinance as well as adopts the various conditions and the provisions of the resolution itself. Um, so the thought was that would always have to be done in concert with the second reading in the ordinance amendment.
It seems to me that previous, in all previous, uh, first readings that we've had here, we've taken a look at a pretty complete draft of the ordinance amendment or the brand-new ordinance, uh, in what we're, I'm hearing that that is not the case or the approach here, um, and I'm not sure how, if they are one in the same, why we would not have a discussion of the language of both so that we can feel comfortable introducing this and saying that the incorporated resolution is, is part of this action that we're taking. So, I hear that you're saying that there's a difference of opinion. It does not make sense to me, um, so I'll, I'll leave that there for now. Um, I do want to express some frustration that I have in this process in that we have rushed so quickly to make this motion and take this vote here that there are a number of things that are left out on the table that we said we would return to in this meeting. Uh, we, we were told that we would have a representative, and thank you, Mr. Lennon, for being here to answer questions, but we haven't really had an opportunity to return to the questions that said could not be answered in the last meeting. Uh, we, as one of our residents noted, have not had a conversation around character, which I think at this point, maybe all of us have said, we want to have that conversation. Most recently, in the last meeting, Mr. Hunter said, "When are we going to return to this conversation?" Uh, we were told that we would have a document in front of us today showing things that were being proposed to move into the PUD agreement at the end of this process that has not been yet produced and clarified for us, so there's still things that I think we're trying to reconcile among these documents. Uh, and, so, so that's, that's another concern that I have, um, is that we've got all of these things on the table, and here we are doing this. Uh, the last thing, and I prepared like a whole outline of this, but I hate reading from here to make this point, and I think this is the most important thing in this approach that we're taking, and I'm going to, to say this, understanding that people are going to disagree with me. Um, and I think it's still important, vitally important, that we get this on the table. Um, I think you know, because Mr. Scher's, Mr. Shea shared an email with you all, uh, that I sent him and Mr. Huff over the weekend, I believe, where I engaged in an exercise last week or between the last meetings in taking these two documents, the resolution and the ordinance, and combining them into one, because I'd raised questions about it before. I said, "It doesn't make sense to me why we're doing it this way. It doesn't look like any legislation I've seen. Um, you know, it doesn't look like these other examples that I found from other municipalities. Like, there's just something that I'm not getting." Um, and so I went through that exercise, and in that document I shared with them as a foundation to have that conversation, like, okay, here's the exercise I went through, um, here's the things that it's raised for me. We haven't had the opportunity to have that conversation. Um, so I just want to be clear, that's not, was not an attempt either for me to step out of, swerve out of my lane and say, "This is how you need to do your job." Um, it was really just a, sort of a thinking exercise for me, and I, what I realized, um, is I think what is of paramount concern to me today, and that's that what I interpret this structure to be doing is to be creating kind of an approval pathway that doesn't exist in our zoning ordinance. Um, and this relates to some of the, the things that I raised in the last meeting that I see have not been resolved or addressed in the resolution and in the ordinance around language, like, uh, using language, um, like, changes, like an updated plan, like saying the concept plan is the 2004 plan, um, like saying, uh, minor instead of major, when we've had discussions about major in, in this room. What I see very clearly is that, to kind of start at the beginning, the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act gives us municipalities two choices when it comes to this, right? The first choice is, hey, this PUD is a tool that you can use as a city if you want to. And we said, yes, we want to use this tool, so we're going to adopt chapter, chapter six here. And then it says, "And if you do that, then you have to decide how you want to handle approval of these PUDs." And you have options. You can handle it legislatively, you can handle it like a special use permit administratively, um, and we said, through section 5.47, hey, we choose the legislative approval process. Um, and so that requires this approval to be handled legislatively through amendment. So that's, we separate, it's been separated out here in a couple of ways, and the language that I mentioned earlier, I think directly contradicts the issue that spurred this process in the first place, which says in section 5.48 that "Any changes from the approved concept plan not determined to be minor shall require that a new, new PUD concept plan be submitted and approved according to section 5.47," which is our legislative approval process. It doesn't provide an avenue for updates or for minor changes. It says that this is a new PUD concept plan. And so what I see happening through the construction of like these two separate documents, um, is that, uh, is that it's working very hard, they're working very hard to make a case that rights are maintained under a, the 2004 PUD, and additional rights are being granted under this 2024, 2025 PUD concept plan, um, where it, it just seems very clear to me in our own ordinance that we made these choices according to state law, and we say, hey, this has to be a new concept plan, and we have to treat it as a concept plan. So I think that was the cognitive distance that I was carrying, is I was assuming, hey, this doesn't make sense to me, um, because we're working through this as a new concept plan. That's what our zoning ordinance says we have to do. Um, but I pick up in here that that is not the approach, and so that, that brings new meaning to when you've told me that's not my interpretation of certain things. Um, so, I raise this as a, as a big concern with this. Um, you know, I mean, I think I will also say a, a couple of other things, which is that the very first draft of this ordinance that city team worked on back in January or February was one detailed ordinance. Uh, when it was presented here, it was different. Um, it, it can be done that way, it's cleaner that way, it adheres to our own zoning ordinance that way. Um, and again, I come back, and I, I know that the motion is on the table, and I know a vote is going to be taken, and I know how the vote is going to go, but this is a huge concern that I would really love for us to consider and have additional discussion about.
Let me respond first. First of all, this is adoption of a concept plan, and that's all this is. It's nothing more than that. The state law provides that you have to choose what body is going to review your plan. The fact that we chose the legislative body does not make it a legislative action, and that's a key distinction. This is still just approval of a concept plan, and that's one of the reasons we split it up between the two documents so that it would work better, because we, like it or not, we do have an ordinance from 2004. We have buildings that were built on the ordinance in 2004, and you're absolutely right. I tried to write this as a single document. I did write it as a single document. I looked at it, I said, "This isn't going to work," because I can't address in that one document the existing buildings versus the new buildings versus all these other things, and that's when I said I'm going to split it into two. And I did. And I brought it to this body, and we had some discussion here. I talked to other people, other attorneys in other offices, talked about what our issue was and how, what our fact situation was, and everybody could understand that the reason we went to the resolution is that the resolution is much more of an explanation document that contains some authoritative provisions like the conditions, but that the ordinance itself, uh, really would not contain most of those things. And if you go back to 2008, we did the exact same thing in 2008. If you look at the ordinance amendment, it's about three lines long. And then there's a findings of fact document that was approved by both the planning commission and the city commission, which provided all the details and all the conditions. So this is not new, it's not unusual in that sense, and, you know, I, I don't disagree theoretically with your theory that if there was a way to write this and have it in a single document, that would generally be preferable, and that's what we do much of the time, but it certainly is not true that we have not done things like this before. And you always, when you're making a change between the initial ordinance introduction and a second reading of the ordinance, whenever that is, uh, you look to see that the changes that you are making are not major changes. So when we have things such as, you know, the language about we're going to switch it from, uh, eight buildings to seven plus a, a parking garage, that, that's not a major change. It has no substantive bearing on it. Um, you, the commission asked for several other things, many of those ended up in the resolution just because that's where they were, uh, but the only one that really didn't was the phasing, and, uh, so the phasing was one that needed to be put in the ordinance. Uh, it's actually in both documents, but it needed to be put in the ordinance, so we, we put it there. Um, but that's why, because it, it needed to work with, with those things. And of course, section six, which is probably the most important part of this whole procedure, is we're destroying our, our CAEC provision that was in the initial ordinance that allowed for the 2004 ordinance to still be in existence with no chances of ever knocking it out unless and until we can change this provision. And we can't just change a provision without going through a PUD change because we also have a PUD agreement, which is a contractual agreement, and this is the only way we can get from A to B.
I, I hear your interpretation, and I respect your interpretation, and I, I think that there is room for a different interpretation, and I, I think it's...
Yeah, I'm not going to argue that with you.
Well, can I finish, please? Yes. Um, I mean, you know, we do have an opinion from another attorney that was presented to us in the last meeting that's, that says this is clearly a legislative action, um, and offers commentary about character that can form a conversation around character. I don't know how we get around the requirement in our ordinance that says major changes trigger a new concept plan. And I, so I, and we could go back and forth, I think, and we say, we disagree.
All I'm going to say, major is, is a descriptive term, it is not a term of art. It does not mean it's a major decision, it means it's not a minor approval that can be done by an administrative officer of the city. That's all it means.
Which, again, in the language of the law, reverts it to the legislative process of approval.
Oh, could be, but could be, could have gone to somebody else.
So do you think that the process that we're going through right now is not legislative?
Correct.
You think that it is administrative?
Yes. And if you go back to an opinion I gave you in February, it goes into great detail, and it details all the cases supporting that position, including the case provided in the legal opinion to which you're referring.
That's protected under the closed session, open evidence act provision.
Yes.
Correct.
But you have access to that.
I do, yes. Um, I do, and I, like I said, I, it was a matter of putting, pulling threads together, right? Um, and I've been very careful about talking about that because I, I think it's unclear as to what we can do in terms of closed sessions. Again, I will leave it that we have a difference of opinion. Um, there are different ways to interpret legislation, and it's not just you and I that disagree, so...
I agree.
Okay. Commissioner Schwartz, did you have anything to add?
Oh, boy. Um, so I just, I, I made a lot of notes as everybody went down the line, so I just want to first clarify, and I think it's already been done, but my motion is on this ordinance alone. I fully intended for us to move on to the next document, the resolution, which has, I think, a lot of the details that we can spend a lot of time working through on how this all actually works, including, uh, condition number eight. So my motion was strictly to introduce this and get us to moving on to that piece.
Correct.
Um, so I, I, I'm struggling with like how to address, because you said a lot, so I made a lot of notes, and I, I think it's important to show both sides up here. And, and like you, Commissioner Gruff-Lasek, said you, there's a difference of opinion. There's also a difference of opinion up here on, you know, you saying that everything is still like on the table, and the discussions have not been wrapped up, and, and I don't think it's worthy of debate on whether what is and isn't open, but just for anybody watching, there is a difference of opinion on whether things are still open. I feel like I have discussed this ad nauseam, um, spent many days and hours and weeks and months on this, on these documents, speaking with experts, hearing differing opinions, pushing back on the drafts of things to make them better because of feedback from residents. I, I consider this to be a great iterative process, and I know that people will be disappointed, but that's because not everybody can have the outcome that they want. I get that. Frustration's going to happen. I'm, I'm a little frustrated, um, on, on where we're at with this like form versus function conversation. I think that's what it's come down to in, in this back and forth here. I, I'll just say, I, I rely on experts, and to our, um, Dr. Patterson's comment, it's good to question authority and not just rely on things. Um, so, you know, there is a, a line to toe between relying on our experts with their many years of experience and doing your own investigation, and I have done that, and I have looked at the case law that was cited by the attorney that you referenced. I've had multiple conversations with Mr. Huff, and I'm, you know, and I saw the draft ordinance that you wanted to put forward, and, no, you can't.
Could I ask for a point of order, please?
I'm listening to...
Could I ask for a point of order, please?
I'm going to let Commissioner Schwartz finish her statement, if you would please let Commissioner Schwartz finish her statement.
This is not, I, I agree with the interpretation, and I think it's correct that this is not legislation. It doesn't look like legislations that's been worked on in the past by my fellow commissioner, but that's because it's not. It is amending something that existed in 2004. Um, and I, I find it somewhat disappointing that a fellow commissioner would come in in the 11th hour with a completely new draft of an ordinance, how they would like to see it, when we have all spent so much time, everybody up here, staff, the developer, the developers' team, this has been worked at so much, and so to come in and say, "My interpretation is right, and it should look like this," because you want it to look legislative, in my opinion. In my opinion. I find that disappointing. So I, I just want to say that, um, thank you to everybody who has worked on this diligently, all with care towards getting us to the best thing for the city, um, and that is why I made this motion and why I am looking forward to discussing even more tonight, the devil in the details, which is in the resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well said.
Please return to my point of order.
So at this point, at this point, we are going to a vote. Pardon me? At this point, we are going to a vote. All those in favor, say yes.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Should we do a roll call vote?
Uh, yes.
Yes, can we please do a roll call vote?
Yes. Uh, Commissioner Skaggs?
No.
Commissioner Burdick?
Yes.
Commissioner Wesley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
No.
Commissioner Gruff-Lasek?
No.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Pravalli?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Thank you. So now we can move on to the discussion of the resolution. Just want to introduce any of the...
Um, just, you know...
Page through everything?
Yeah, no, we turn the right documents. Um, so for, um, the difference between this version and last version, John, I don't think you made any additional changes.
I've made no changes to the resolution yet. I've made no changes since the 827 version, which was discussed, it started to be discussed at the September 2nd meeting, and it was not completed, that discussion.
So, um, just seeking direction from, at a staff level, Commissioner Skaggs noted, and as Commissioner Schwartz, the question, um, about social hub, um, that we would look to incorporate a city condition eight, um, on that. Um, I think Mr. Lennon has noted that... I think Mr. Lennon has noted the openness to that conversation. I moved to my notes, excuse me for one second. The, and again, and whether it be part of eight or we're thinking about different condition, Mr. Lennon had noted, willing to discuss or explore the language in regards to some sort of commitment to continue the current practice of providing for civic events. We'll continue to wordsmith that. And then specifically on city commission, condition two on page eight, which talks about the floors of upper buildings and in excess of three stories shall be stepped back from the lower floors and shall have facade articulation is what was discussed end of last week. So, and then I noted earlier, the social hub, reworking the language and the drawing before you this evening in regards to that. So with that, staff, we'll just open to comments, comments?
I'd just like to enter a quick point of order. Is it customary to know for commissioners coming into a meeting that there will actually be a vote and what specifically that vote will be on during a city commission meeting?
I'm still a little unclear before we, I'm so sorry, Manager Charles, to kind of pull back out really quickly, but-
We all received this memo from Mr. Charles today about, just because there were some questions on procedure.
Today, okay. Well, that's not enough time for commissioners to really prepare with busy lifestyle.
It's just a quick outline of the procedure.
It's also an action requested.
Didn't have time to read it, didn't even see the memo.
It was also action requested in the memo.
It is the action requested in the memo.
Where can I find that, so you can point out where I might have missed?
First paragraph of the memo-
In the memo.
That the city commission review and introduce a PUD ordinance amendment.
Right, introduce. So I was unclear that there would have been a vote, and as well from kind of a general outline of the meeting and the flow of what we're doing. I guess I'm just kind of catching up to speed on what the rest of the process of tonight's meeting will follow.
Right now, we're discussing the resolution.
Mm-hmm. Yep. And will there be a vote on that as well this evening?
Staff would not recommend a vote this evening, because we have some outstanding language issues.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Did anyone have any thoughts on the resolution that they wanted to share? I know Commissioner Schwartz, you mentioned, we kind of stopped. Maybe we start with you, with you finishing your thoughts on what you started to go with earlier.
That would be the new condition eight? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes. There's something else? Condition eight? Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I guess do we just want to open it up for discussion?
Quick reference on where to find that once everybody's arrived. There's just, there's a lot of papers.
Yep, page eight. Page nine.
Nine.
For your last document.
There's a lot of eights.
Yeah, sorry.
It's the redlined version?
So on both, yeah. On page nine, you'll see that eight was crossed out previously. And then we're discussing the idea of adding a new, a different eight.
So we don't actually have language developed yet?
No.
Like, okay, that's what we were talking about before. Thank you.
So I feel like I talked a lot about it in the beginning, so I don't know if you want me to, like, say everything again. I'd like to give everybody else a chance to talk and feed, you know, provide their own feedback and thoughts on what we discussed in planning commission, on do we want to, and how do we ensure that the social hub and/or north-south pedestrian paths get constructed in all of the different ways that this could go? If that's a, does that make sense to everybody as a summary?
That's what I'm looking for.
Okay. And I would even add that there, I believe that there's nuance between the social hub and the north-south pedestrian path in that the north-south pedestrian path, you know, understood that it's probably part of this staging area, but at the conclusion should be built regardless of C or D.
I would agree with that.
I would also support that.
Yeah. I mean, I think I'm, I'm far more- We might have eight and nine. I don't know if we want to separate out.
Yeah, I was going to say, well, give us a chance to wordsmith, if you will. But so I, so that I understand, and Mr. Huff and Mr. Lennon, that language around assures that the social hub gets constructed, and to Commissioner Schwartz's point, and I believe Commissioner Skaggs, you noted this too, that if C is constructed and something happens that D never comes to fruition, do we want, or what would potential language look like there? And then with the construction of the north-south path, the conversation is around the notion that if something happens that C and D never get constructed, that there is that pedestrian pathway regardless.
Yes.
And whether that's tied to the expiration of a PUD or whatnot, so.
Thank you, and thank you again for all of your work and thoughts tonight. I know it's already getting late, and being my age, I'm feeling it, so. But appreciate going through this exercise. And I think with respect to the social hub and what we're calling condition number eight, I'm confident that we can work out some language that will be acceptable to the applicant. I think we know that he's willing to do the social hub, and I believe it's the pedestrian path, no later than 12 months after the later of building C or building D. In the event that one or both of those isn't built, I think what I'm hearing is we would be asked to build the pedestrian connection within 12 months of the expiration of the PUD, which sounds reasonable, if that's the thought. And I think we can likely work on language that makes everyone comfortable.
That's my intention. I don't know if that's everybody else's.
I would agree with that. That's, that would be, yep.
I'm good.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Was there anything else that we wanted to discuss about the resolution this evening? Any other thoughts?
I, maybe I blacked out earlier if we talked about this, but the articulated, I'm not going to say that right, the articulated facade. We did not have the discussion up here today yet, did we?
No.
Okay. So this came up during planning commission from one of our fellow residents who is an architect. And he, this is a suggestion with respect to the required setback above three stories. So he said, as an architect, he would suggest allowing, changing the language to allow for more flexibility, understanding that there should be some facade articulation above three stories. And so he's saying, like, you don't, you might not want it to be just three stories up in 10 feet, two stories up, or, you know, three, one up. So he would suggest making the language facade articulation so that there could be some forward, backward, sorry, Mr. Corby, you're probably cringing at my explanation, but some, something that makes it perhaps more visually appealing while accomplishing what we're trying to do in making it a less bulky appearance from the street. So, sorry.
No.
So I wasn't sure, one of my concerns that I expressed at the time was not saying that you guys would ever try to do this, but I like to have everything in writing, is how do we make sure that that, if we were to change the language, that how do we make sure it's not taken advantage of to where some things like canilevered out? So, or so that the articulation above three stories is outward instead of inward? So kind of a two-part question of, is there, are folks open to facade articulation as being closer to the standard? And then how do we write that in a way that preserves what we're trying to accomplish?
Does this lock the developer into making some of those architectural changes, or does it just allow for it in the resolution?
I think our, I should, I'll say my, my goal would be to stay true to what the original intent was, which was above three stories to have it notched in in some way. But I think the idea was, like, let's say there's a 10-foot stretch between the third and fourth floor that comes out like one foot, or like a bay window kind of vibe. Like, are we, I don't know. I don't know how to write it. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to relay what we talked about in planning commission. Are we open to it? And probably would be helpful to have you guys weigh in on thoughts.
Yeah, we are open to the concept, I will say that. You know, we're familiar with what facade articulation is, and we believe that, like the social hub, you know, language, we can, I guess, enhance the language in condition two to provide a little more flexibility, if that's what the city's interested in.
Have you ever drafted anything like, 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 does this condition come up in anything where you could, you and Mr. Huff would say, "Oh, yeah, we know how to accomplish this" while keeping our goal?
Well, I'll begin by saying it is a bit general and conceptual. We looked at some definitions when that comment was brought to our attention, and, you know, it's sort of visionary, what that means. So you may be more comfortable with the more specific condition in two as it is. That's fine with us. If you want to elaborate a bit on that and add the notion of facade articulation, we're willing to engage in that and work with some language that maybe makes it a little more along the lines of what the comment from the planning commission was. So this is one where we're, again, willing to work with, with the group and maybe take our best shot at some language and, and see what you think. We'd hate to see the process slowed down, though, for something that's a little bit secondary in the grand scheme. But, but that, be that as it may, if that's something that is of interest, we're happy to, to look at that and, you know, I don't, I'm not, it does get a little general.
Sure.
Thanks.
If I could, if I could to, part of the discussion at planning commission was really not to lock them in at the step backs at three stories, but allow for that even earlier, you know, so it could be after the first, so was, the, I guess, the, the recommendation was to allow some flexibility, understand there need to be some articulation, some step back, but not prescribe that for every single building, so they're all stepped back at the exact same, you know, every single one of them stepped back at three stories because that's what it says. Maybe one is, one building is stepped back after the first story and second story, maybe one is at three stories. So really lock that piece in, but to allow some flexibility so we, so that the buildings have some interesting character versus maybe being so prescriptive that you get something somewhat similar.
Yeah, I would, I would hate to limit in design and enhancement, you know, so, so I like flexibility a little bit because I don't want to limit any design or aesthetic freedom, you know, something, like you said, that could be too cookie cutter, you know, something that had poor character.
And zooming out, for, for clarity here, I remember, that was so many corporate jargons in a row. I remember talking before about architecture. So like, you know, obviously, architecture doesn't come at the concept phase. You come to us later with the architecture, and maybe city staff, attorneys want to talk about this more. We, we can say, whoa, that is not what we talked about when it comes to architecture, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
In more legal terms?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Do you feel that that was answered? Do you feel?
Yeah, I, I'm, I am good with allowing for more architectural creativity. I think it will lead to a better end product as long as we're protecting ourselves from it going the other direction. And so I, I would say at this point, let staff and attorneys run with it and try to come up with a language that's actually readable and can, you know, understandable by everybody that accomplishes that. But I think I've been doing a lot of talking, and I have no idea what everybody else is thinking.
I appreciate that suggestion. I appreciate the idea of flexibility being built in and not something that we have to come back and check on and-
Yep.
So that the best, most creative foot forward can come here.
I completely agree. I feel like this is like back to like our man-hand park design, where we let the, the park architects kind of have a bunch of freedom, and because we weren't park architects, and what came back, like, all of us were like, huh? And then when they finally put it in, it was gorgeous and people love it. I want to give them the same freedom while at the same time protecting us as a city to not get stuck in something that, that of course we don't want. So it's, I'm really going to be relying on our, on our staff and our, and our attorney to write that where we still have some teeth to claw it back if they aren't following the intent of the setbacks, but giving them the architectural freedom to come up with cool things, because they generally do, architects.
Does that give you enough information on that?
Yep, I think we're good.
On that, okay. Were there any other points in the resolution to discuss?
Yeah. Kudos to commissioners for lending your, your thoughts and perspectives to building design. That's quite, quite honestly, not an area that I put a lot of time or thought into. I believe my thoughts are, are more, you know, still along the lines of, for instance, resolution number seven on the bottom of page nine. Am I in the right area?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I had one specific question on the north-south from wealthy to the middle of the development, kind of over by the social hub area. It's not listed as, I feel like I'm asking this out of turn. If I'm not, let me keep going, if not, just somebody interrupt me. That, so I was at the festivities all weekend here and saw a lot of foot traffic heading through the, between Chase Bank and back of Lakewood Hills. I asked Mr. Corby this last meeting, and I think the answer was that there would be some signage there, and I know this is bleeding over into some planning commission conversation. But with the parking, with the two-way street, people, especially, I'm thinking, kids, you know, will, will be walking in that area. What have we done to address that concern that we're sharing a space with both vehicular traffic, parking, and clearly, we're not going to be able to rule kids or anybody else from walking in there? What, what can be done there to sort of alleviate some of that congestion, potential impact of, of walkers, e-bikers, et cetera, with, with automobile traffic?
Mike Corby, 840 Ottawa. We did, we did talk about this. I think it's create safe places where they can go first, and then signage to kind of tell them things that they should already know. But we're creating safe places. We're going to have the, basically, the Bagley intersection's going to be there. We're creating another point of north-south. So it's, it's operating that way right now, and I, and I know kids still use it, but I think giving them safe places is the first key to, to making that work.
Is that jigsaw puzzle-looking gray area, is that sidewalk kind of in, in front of, well, that is the Chase Bank outline there, is that, is that sidewalk the gray area that we kind of see the irregular sort of shape there?
The gray area is the pavement.
It is pavement, okay.
It's really not set up currently for you to, to walk through there, but people do walk through there.
Okay.
Commissioner, you said number seven. Did you have questions about this language?
I think just saw the word traffic and, and that comment has, or that topic has, has been on my mind still since, you know, two weeks ago, when we have addressed it. I, I remain concerned about, you know, making sure that a proper, proper traffic study is That will alleviate a lot of the concerns of our residents. Yep.
Can I bring us back to number three? Condition number three. And I understand that August 27 is the most recent version, that we're still looking at that. But since we're having the conversation, I just want to reiterate, Commissioner Wesley brought it up the last time, and I want to say it again, that having some nod to an approval process here, even though that will be fleshed out more in the PUD agreement, would be appreciated, just to ensure that everybody understands that we're coming to the table and we're going to be coming up with some agreement.
I like that.
An agreement to agree, if you will, maybe.
And if I, if I may-
And if I, if I may, and I think with the addition of the commitment by gaslight investors, and well, obviously with the language is in regards to continuing their practices, you may see some interplay there, but we'll see how the language works out.
Okay. Is, thank you.
This provision, number three, also, I feel like that overlaps with the topic from the Planning Commission about is there a potential language that acknowledges that development is open to the public yet remains private? Is that where we anticipate seeing overlap in language?
I don't have an answer to that question.
Okay.
So we will, we will endeavor to make sure everything complements each other. We're not over, you know, one doesn't unintentionally overrule another.
So in over, kind of a, I acknowledge that this is jumping ahead to the final plan approval stage, but it's always good to plan for the future. And I've spent so much time in the concept plan review that I hadn't revisited this language file. But in section 5.48, which talks about the final site, site plan review, it says that there must, there must be provision assuring that open space areas shown on the plan for use by the public or residents of the development will be or have been irrevocably committed for that purpose. The city may require deed restrictions, conveyances, or other documents to be placed in escrow to accomplish this. So it seems like that kind of like sets a pretty clear and strict standard looking into the future, that we have wide latitude in the final plan approval to say, I mean, even going, revisiting the idea of public versus private conveyance as a possibility that that's not off of the table.
Can you read the beginning of that again?
I have a comment to that.
Oh, perfect.
I can, can you reread it again?
Yes, please. It'll give me better context.
Uh, I didn't carry over the subsection, so I apologize. But so is there, requires that there be provision assuring that open space areas shown on the plan for use by the public or residents of the development will be or have been irrevocably committed for that purpose. The city may require deed restrictions, conveyances, or other documents to be placed in escrow to accomplish this. And I want to say it's like maybe number three off the top of my head.
Is that in the resolution?
That is in our city, that's in our zoning ordinance.
No, I think that's in the zoning ordinance. Yeah, I, well, so I, then I, maybe I don't have a comment because I thought that might be in the resolution to which I almost had to go to the lab.
It's not in the resolution, but it sounds like it's coming in the final site plan.
Well, so what I think the part of the ordinance is likely speaking to are things like stormwater facilities and public areas, you know. What we've agreed to do
Hold, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Could you repeat what you just said?
Well, what I think what they're referring to in the ordinance with respect to the, those PUD elements are things that are truly being dedicated to the public, right? And what we're talking about in the resolution is the ongoing practice of allowing, you know, the community to use private property, you know, as they have, under the same practices that we've been doing. So that, that's what we're committing to. We're not, you know, giving land away, other than the public, you know, infrastructure and those elements to the extent those are public. So anyway, so I was confused by your comment because I think we're talking about apples and oranges. And that's, and I was thinking about the language in the resolution that relates to the, I guess, the privileges that we're allowing the community to have on the private property. That's all.
Well, I guess I, I'm not sure that we are talking about apples and oranges. And again, acknowledging this is in final plan approval, but looking down the line, because a follow-up question for, to this for me is, again, as I read it, open space area shown on the plan for use by the public or residents of the development will be or have been irrevocably committed for that purpose. I mean, does this include streets as well? And does that lock us into like the street layout and like that those have been irrevocably committed to this?
I would say no. I mean, unless it's a public street, right? So anyway, I'll sit down.
Thank you.
I have a question. This is related. It's come up before. Is there, do we have an easement? Is there like a sidewalk easement? Is that a thing?
Yes, it could be an easement for sidewalk.
That's, that's a good example of what I think she's describing.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I understand sidewalk easements, right? Again, I'm just coming back to the language of our zoning ordinance and what it, because it doesn't provide a caveat for public utilities and things like that. So I guess maybe the question's on the table for discussion amongst attorneys and or in the future about, does this apply to streets? And what does this apply and why?
Can you tell me the section number?
Again, I don't have the subsection in front of me.
Oh, sorry.
Section 5.48. Do you have it? I'm sorry, I can't call on you, Mr. Anderson.
Sorry, 5.48, C4.
Thanks. I want to look at that later. Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any other comments about the resolution?
If I could bring it back to number, well, the new number eight, I guess, talking about social hub, north-south pathways and finding ways to ensure that that's going to get built and when. And in conjunction with if C or D and or D do not get built. Wondering if C and or D do not get built, and taking into consideration the 21 years it's been sitting there as a concrete lot and hearing the, the voices of concern saying, hey, we would love more green space. Wondering the possibility, I would love to see that something to the effect of saying, hey, if C or, and or D don't get built, time runs out. Instead of having it sit like a, the existing concrete being there, knowing that, I'm assuming the developer would have to excavate that concrete out anyway to prepare for foundation, would it be too much to ask that, let's say, for example, D does not get built, time gets run out, could that be designated as green space, putting in grass, permeable space, potentially, potentially extending the social hub? Again, just so it, a couple of things it fixes, doesn't, it prevents, prevents a potential eyesore in concrete. It helps with runoff management, so it's more permeable. It, you know, it kind of falls in line with our carbon neutral and environmental friendly sustainability, you know, goals that we have as a city. So I just thought I'd throw that out there to see if that's something to consider and if it's not too much of a heavy ask.
Yeah, I mean, I I think Mr. Lennon addressed that a little bit earlier.
Yeah, I, I think that would be a bit of a, you know, I can't speak for my client. He's not here right now. But just hearing that concept, I think it would be a bit of a penalty if, because he doesn't get his building built on time, that he has to give up his land. Now, obviously couldn't, he'd have to, you know, he'd have to come back to try and get a new concept plan, what, what have you, if that did occur. And I think we've agreed that, you know, he would be willing to build the, the pedestrian lane. But, but I, I think that would be a
A couple of points of clarity, just, I'm not, I guess, maybe it didn't come out correctly because I, I'm assuming that then you'd have to start over if we ran out of time. Let's say D didn't get done for whatever, come back and having to reapply for that. Thinking it could be a temporary fix. And maybe it's something is just, hey, we're, instead of concrete, it's just going to repair that land, just have, have it permeable and not just be concrete. I guess I'm trying to
Like in the interim, perhaps?
In the interim, exactly. So again, we could talk about the exact words, but saying, hey, we know that we're coming back to it. We don't know when yet. We're going to reapply in the interim. We're going to, we, we know we're going to, similar to how we, we earlier were like, understood and agreed that the current parking deck, the second floor, the second story was, you know, not, was dangerous. And instead of mending it to, we allowed to demolish that and turning into, you know, and it did help with maybe the visual aspect and still providing parking there. I guess what I'm saying is, yeah, if there's an interim agreement there to say, hey, we, we could turn that into permeable grass space in the, and so it doesn't sit at a concrete pad. Because I don't know, I guess, I don't know when you'll come back, you know, it could be, hopefully, hopefully it's not another 20 years. We want, we want to see that. If this does pass, we want to see
I can assure you, we don't, we will be doing all we can to get these built. But I appreciate your comment. And I can share that with him and the spirit in which it was raised and the ideas of other ideas, really, if one or, or both of those buildings aren't built, you know, before the clock runs out. So thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schwartz, I'm sorry, and right after you, G actually said you had another question.
I just wanted to make sure the, like, as, this is a question for City Manager Charles. As you're going back and all discussing what should be in here, the topics and planning commission recommendations in the memo will be part of refining that language, right?
Correct.
Okay. Because I think what we were just talking about, the mandating and approval process, that's there. That was an important part of Planning Commission discussion, your discussion before tonight. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Anderson, thank you.
I was just going to echo Commissioner Wesley's comment. I think just having some language around what to do if would, would, would be important. One thing that came up with a resident, I forgot to ask this, and I don't know where it fits in, I apologize. But right now, the, the property, as you look from Lakeside South or Reed's Lake Boulevard South, has quite a slope and a grade to it. I should have asked this a long time ago, but the building height that we're looking at, is that slope and grade going to be removed? Or, or are we building buildings on top of that? How are the contours of the land going to be such that the measurements we have and sort of the visuals, sorry, I'm asking like an eight-part question. What, what happens with the slope and grade there in that area?
There is about a seven-foot grade difference from east to west. The high spot is on the east and it drops down to shopping center. So the parking garage, for instance, just let's take that, the, the, the surface level of that will be at grade or maybe a little bit higher. And then we'll actually tuck under there. So building G is going to essentially be, and it drops down as well to the north toward Lakeside. So building G, they're, they're townhomes, so that they can be, we can stagger them to kind of go up and down the grade. H is predominantly flat along Lakeside, so that's not going to be an issue. And then F, the, the lowest level will be kind of tucked under parking. So on the shopping center, it'll be more exposed. And then as you head toward the east, it'll be essentially at grade. So those are really the only ones that are going to be affected. C and D are going to be fairly flat. It does drop down a little bit to kind of where the social areas, maybe a couple of feet. So we might have, it actually might work well to create almost an amphitheater or a look, overlook down into that space. So, but we have thought about it and that it is a reality that we're going to have to deal with. I hope that answers that.
Thank you. Yep, yep.
I just have a little one. I'm just going back through, kind of looping through. I just want to make super sure that we caught everything the Planning Commission was recommending so we can hit it before the next meeting. The one thing I saw on the list that I don't know if we've talked about was the street sidewalk and lightning maintenance. Can we talk to that? Do you have anything from that, that, like, what was that intent behind that?
The intent, when Planning Commission discussed it?
Yeah.
So we, let's see, we
Sorry to put you on the spot on this one.
No, no, no.
I just want to make sure we get all the pieces.
Yeah, I think the, they were in agreement with what we were trying to accomplish, which is like, let's make sure we're at, we're exceeding city standards. And that includes allowing for, like, it's noted here, like, RFBs, if that turns into, or is a city policy, as we have policies like that, our goal would be consistency from the, you know, sidewalks in the city, you know, onto the development. So that people are experiencing, having the same experience as they're walking, biking. The one thing that was added, and it was in those recommendations, was related to maintenance and the specific issue of graffiti came up and just making sure that if that or other forms of vandalism occur, they need to repair them and, you know, as soon as practical, which I think everybody's goals are aligned on that. So
And I guess I would just speak to city staff to, like, that would be something I would support to make sure that that's covered in the language and you guys are comfortable with that.
Yeah, and I think really what we were focused on, as, as you guys have had prior conversations too, is to look at the development agreement in terms of what, that flexibility with maintenance, but also, as is noted, different, you know, standards or practices that evolve over time. We don't want to be stuck in something, you know, that is current now and even five, 10 years could be very different. So we want to, we want to have flexible language around that. And that was kind of where the discussion went in terms of access to roads and walkways and
Okay.
The development space too. I mean, I gave an example of Breton Village, there's requirements for that particular, is, is finite, or is refined as the type and height of fence that, that Breton Village Mall has to have between residential properties and they have to cover that at their expense. And, I mean, there's very detailed things. And when we've had those come in, that's what we pull out is the development agreement and we let them know. And then we haven't had any issues with that. So really, those are really the, I think the, those are all recorded agreements too. So those are, they pass on to, you know, future owners. And we really, we have some experience with some of those and they're, they've been effective.
Okay. So what I'm hearing then is that will be addressed, it'll just be addressed in the development agreement as opposed to this PUD. And that could, that could be what, you know, gets Planning Commission what they're looking for there. I'm good with that.
I got the impression like that's how it's always, that's how it's been done, that's how it works. So we shouldn't try to reinvent the wheel here and, and put it here because it all gets accomplished there with very detailed rules and if-then's and got to maintain it to this standard, that sort of thing.
Yep, totally understand. I just want to like check a box. They're recommended, are we going to address it? Yes, we're going to do it in the development agreement. And that works for me.
Thank you.
A follow-up question to that. And then I actually have some suggested language for that particular condition. Is, you just named again, something that's getting moved to the PUD contract. I mentioned earlier that we asked for in the last meeting, a document that contained all of the things that have been suggested to move into that. Will we have that available to us prior to the next meeting?
I can tell you, I will try to do that. I mean, I'm going to put the draft in this language ahead of that issue. But assuming there's enough hours in the day.
It's just, it would be very helpful for us to track, to see as we talk through these things, what is being proposed to be moved to one place or another.
I mean, if you go through the resolution, you'll see a number of areas that call out that this language, which had previously been elsewhere, was moved to here and would be covered in the new final site plan or PUD agreement, whatever you want to call it. So, but yes, I mean, we want to have that kind of list. I'm not opposed to the list at all. It's just a question. When I get to it.
Thank you. And then, so the suggested language in number one would be that any private streets and sidewalks constructed by the developers shall be built to standards and guidelines approved by the city and maintained and improved according to additional or modified standards, guidelines, and or policies as they are approved or adopted by the city. Of course, I can send that along, but that is inclusive
I was going to say, if you could send us that language, because
Yep. It's just inclusive of kind of the full suite of standards, guidelines, policies, and that as we update them, so too do they become applicable to these privately maintained streets and sidewalks.
Any other thoughts on the resolution language?
Again, if this was brought up in the past, for a reminder, where did the language originate as far as the city voluntarily taking part to fund any improvements to the streets, roads, sidewalks, et cetera, within the unit? I mean,
You're speaking about item number four?
Item number four.
Okay.
Yeah. Just, it just occurs to me that a lot has been made about the word public and the word private. And we are very, you know, clear that, you know, with the question, I think that Abby brought up a little bit ago, in terms of it's, it's open and it's social, but it's not public. And in terms of ownership, I don't think there's been any confusion amongst the, the commission that, that this would, any part of it would ever become public land in terms of ownership. But number one, why as a city would we voluntarily, in what situation would, would it ever arise that the city would voluntarily step forward and say, sure, we'll paint new parking stripes on, on parking spaces? Or, you know what, that broken curb, we'll come in and fix that. Of course, if it's a city vehicle that Of course, if it's a city vehicle that, that broke it, I'm sure an accident report or something of that nature could come along to substantiate it. But I think the gray area in terms of voluntarily funding still is a little bit uneasy, especially in light of the idea that we are, in a sense here, in a real literal sense, negotiating with the developer through this resolution language without the taxing criminal financing package and proposal being in front of us. So I, I would actually motion to remove the words voluntarily funding any improvements as, I'm not sure I could come up with a great example of any improvement that we would really ever have to be on the hook for.
Let me, let me give you the example.
Sure.
I think, and it doesn't say it here, and maybe it should say it here. I think that language was added, because it was added, it was not in the original draft of the paragraph. We're really referring there to off-site improvements to streets or utilities, not something that the developer would own, improvements as property, as buildings, anything like that. The thought was, you know, some of these studies have talked about there may be, for instance, in the traffic study, a recommendation of some kind of a change in an intersection. And if we were convinced that there was a reason for city participation or a desire for participation, we'd have that option. And I think that's how it came up. We wanted to make sure that we hadn't fully closed the door so there'd be no ability of the city to participate. And Shay, is that your recollection of that?
No, and that's, that was exactly the conversation is, is that we had noted and based on previous conversations that the city is not obligated. On the other hand, as we think through, you know, if suddenly state grant funding comes about and something and there's asked to be a contribution, just it was not intended to, to commit us, but more of a, we're just providing that flexibility for the city. It does not obligate us, it does not mean we have to do it, but we just wanted, the thought behind it was just thinking through potential models, things of that nature, that okay, did you, do we really want to completely close that door? So that was the thought behind the language.
Sorry. If I could, the other, the other aspect that we were thinking of, at least it came to mind to me, was for, if we're looking at utilizing, and it's noted that we're going to be utilizing or requiring access and use of like the social hub area, you know, we, if we're looking at, for example, the Christmas tree holiday gathering and there's some sort of site improvement that's required for us to have that, having that voluntarily in here so that decision can be made. So for example, you know, we, we purchase a different decorations or something that requires some electrical work or something else, you know, it allows us to voluntarily say, hey, we're doing this, or some other type of event there that requires some sort of change to allow for the city at that, whatever that time is, to make a change so they can have that, whatever that event is or whatever, and incur those costs, whether that be with the city itself or in partnership with GVBA or something like that. So those are things that we may not know what the festival is going to be in 10 years or whatever, and it may require some changes. And if we don't, we felt having the language there, that's really at, at the city's desire to make those. So for example, if you were to look at your own personal property and you hosted some neighborhood gathering and you needed to upgrade your electrical service for the band or whatever, maybe it'd be okay for everyone to chip in on the street to pay for electrical services for the event. So that was another aspect we were thinking of. It's more for like the event space and maybe some, any sort of future changes that might be needed.
My recollection is that sentence came from city staff. That was not a request by the developer, they didn't even bring that subject up. But we, we realized that maybe we'd boxed ourselves more into a corner than we wanted to with that. I mean, it still starts off with, we're not obligated. That's the key. And so this is an exception to that rule.
If we were to opt to voluntarily fund any portion of an improvement, that would come before city commission, right?
It would have to, unless it's less than $10,000.
So the word voluntarily from a legal perspective doesn't make you nervous in the sense that...
I mean, as I say, Commissioner, I would, we'd read it in context of the first sentence that says, the city is not obligated to fund any improvement.
Period.
And we, also that sentence does talk specifically of improvements for streets or utilities. So we're not talking about improvements to land or improvements to buildings or improvements to roads.
The way I'm reading it, this just allows us to, should we choose, should like an event or decoration or something become appropriate?
Yep.
That's something we wanted to do.
One additional question, I mean, don't, is it not, are these two statements not also true in their absence from this document? I mean, is there something, we're not obligated to fund any improvements, right?
I want that in there personally because when I read this, I think about improvements to streets and utilities outside of the development. So like, for example, we're requiring a traffic study that includes intersections outside of the development. And so let's say Lake and Bagley, San Lu Ray corner requires that a traffic light be put in. I want this here so that we wouldn't be required to, I want to make it clear, everybody should know, like, we're not trying to catch anybody off guard. I, I don't think the city should be on the hook for putting in that traffic light.
I see that, I see that, and I agree with that statement. I'm wondering why then it doesn't say that the developer is obligated to fund improvements.
Well, and actually, your, your question being addressed in paragraph five, really four and five need to be read together. And it doesn't obligate them to do it, but it obligates them to come up with a plan that they can afford. And if they can't afford it, and they can't raise money from us or themselves or somebody else, then they're going to have to adjust the plan.
Correct. So again, I think that that makes number four redundant since we're saying the obligation is on them, if they can't produce it, then they don't get an approval.
I, I think we were trying, and I'm a little bit surprised you're arguing against this, we were trying to send a clear message.
I'm not arguing against it, I'm just seeking clarification.
That the city is not, not voluntarily, you know, making a commitment to do anything. We wanted to be clear on that. I mean, to be perfectly blunt, I think the developer has on occasion suggested us things that they would not be willing to pay for. And I think we felt it was time to turn the table on that and say, well, there may be things we're not willing to pay for. And we'll be as direct with you as you are to us.
I had one last question for the evening.
For this portion?
For this portion. And it's actually for Chief Bukema. Chief, you sent an email some months ago stating that there are no concerns with the PUD as presented, perhaps in March, April, May timeframe. Since the PUD's changed, are there, I guess, two-part question, number one, are there any new concerns with the layout that give you any concern, given that, you know, perhaps we should have an updated kind of report or answer from you and your staff, since we do have a new, somewhat newly designed PUD?
No, a lot of the things I look at are access. And I think that's, doesn't present a challenge, again, with our, with our resources, as long as they remain the same. I don't see any changes to that.
Okay. And this is super specific. Again, given your level of expertise, so specifically, where would a fire engine position itself if something happened in FG or H? I know that they're, you know, suggesting that there would be a gate placed there. I'm just wondering if, if a truck could, could actually get into the, the intersection there? And just trying to think outside of the proverbial box, I guess, with, with some of the questions in terms of safety and design and layout.
Yeah, as far as access to that goes, even if there's a gate, most places have, you know, the Knox Box access to get in. As far as turning radius, as, you know, I'm looking at here, we can navigate through those small traffic circles that are, that are new, so that doesn't look like it's a challenge. As well as specifically the FG and H from a fire side, there's, there's multiple access points that don't seem to prohibit us getting after them.
Thank you.
And if I, if I could add to that, too, the, the building code in those commercial buildings requires all those buildings to be, to have sprinkler systems and so similar to what you see in this building. So, and then in terms of spacing for hydrants, et cetera, that's also a requirement within 300 feet, not something that you guys would typically get involved with, but that's something that, is something that we do for Eleanor Lane or wherever else it is in the city. We collaborate with public safety on those locations. In fact, we even know which ones are public and private, depending on what color they are, those types of things.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions about the resolution language? I know that has been the request of city staff that we, this will be on a future agenda as well, correct?
Do we need to make any sort of motion to, like, postpone discussion until next time to wrap this up?
No.
Okay.
Okay. If there's no further questions, then we will move on to the consent agenda items. May I please have a motion in a second on tonight's consent agenda items?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Thank you very much. This meeting's adjourned.
It's been like, it's allergies. It makes me feel any better. Nope, it's allergies. I wouldn't be in here like giving it to you if it was anything worse than that, but like...